This meeting to order, this is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held May 2nd, 2017 at 6:00 PM. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Althouse?
Here.
Councilmember Norman?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Vice Mayor Howery?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the United States of America, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is Brief Summary of Current Events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. Public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Any council members have anything to report?
I just have a quick one. I attended the Professional Women's Luncheon last couple of weeks ago. It was great. It's a great group of women for professional women interested in networking with other women. They've got great resources and actually I was just invited to serve on the Board of Directors today, so it's a pretty cool thing.
Great. Any other council members? I'll be participating in the Great Sedona Chili Cook-Off this Saturday, somehow. And it takes place in Sedona at Swakapaki, so you're all welcome to come out. I believe it starts at 11:00. And I've got a local restaurant helping me with the chili, thank goodness. Riot will be helping me make the chili. And I'm competing against Mayor Sandy Moriarty, who won last year, so please keep me in your thoughts.
(laughing).
And that's all I have. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Mayor, council members, just one item. Our Youth Commission will be participating in the Governor's Youth Leadership Day this Friday, and so we're real proud of them for going down and participating.
Great.
That's it.
Great. Okay, next item is Presentations. We have one presentation, information regarding Bike to Work Week. I believe we have Carla Hofer and Nancy Gottschalk from Yavapai County Community Health Services Department. Thanks for being here.
Hello? Okay. To make it much lower. Good evening. My name is Carla Hofer. I'm with Yavapai County Community Health Services. I appreciate the invitation to speak tonight from both the mayor and council members. We're very excited about Bike Week that's coming up. It's going to be the biggest and the best that we've had. It's going to start out, I get packets to each of you, but it starts out with the mayor's ride on Saturday, the 13th, at 8:00. And this year, it will be about a 2.7-mile ride from Garrison Park down into Old Town and back up to the park. When people get back up to the park, we're going to have a bike rodeo or a bike skills course, whichever you would like to call it. All of the children have been invited from all of the schools. And we will set up a bike skills course that will allow children to safely learn turns. They do figure eights, they do safe stops, led by Cottonwood PD, thankfully. And Cottonwood Fire usually comes and helps us fit helmets and works with us on that as well. But it's about a two hour, it's a two-hour event. It's, we take the parking lot by Garrison, between Garrison and the county buildings, and we block it off so it's totally safe. And we chalk it up so that they can practice all of their turns. And we usually have an area for the youngest ones that are still just learning to maybe training wheels or learning to balance, so we'll have a separate area for them as well. During the same time, we will have a bicycle buy and sell event, which is the first one that we've had. People can bring a bicycle to sell, or they can come and buy a bike. And that again is from 9:30 to 11:30. A percentage of that, of the sales goes to Chain Reaction, which is a nonprofit helping to recycle upcycled bikes for those in need. So we've been busy, actually Heather's been busy, collecting bicycles and getting them up and ready to go and getting them donated to people that need them. On the 17th, which is Wednesday, we will have a Ride of Silence. It's a tribute ride in memoriam to those who have lost their lives while cycling, but also an awareness event for everyone to be aware that there are bicycles out there and on the road. And that is at 5:00 on the 17th and goes till about 6:00. That is a very slow and obviously silent ride. On Friday, the 19th, there is a social ride. This actually happens every Friday. This one just happens to fall within Bike Week. From Girona Cafe, it's usually about an hour and a half. It's for cyclists of all abilities. And there's a pretty large and visible group that rides out from there every Friday morning. So if, even if you can't make this one, everybody's invited any Friday morning.
Great.
And so for, throughout the week, we're going to be participating in Bike to Work Week, which was mentioned earlier. And Nancy's going to give you the details on that.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Olinsky, council members, my name's Nancy Gottschalk. I also work for Yavapai County Community Health Services. So Bicycle Awareness Month is about cycling for recreation, but it is also about encouraging cycling for transportation. So in an effort to motivate people to give bicycle commuting a try, we are initiating a group challenge. So during Bike to Work Week, you can earn points for every day you ride your bike to work. And the longer your commute is, the more points you will earn. Very simply, the team with the most points at the conclusion of Bike to Work Week wins. But let me show you more about that. We have our registration page, which looks like this, and I'll tell you more about how to access that. But first, all participants need to register. When you register for Bike to Work Week, you'll be asked what team you want to pool your points with. And we want everybody to be part of a team for this challenge. So we have eight teams that you can choose from. You can choose from the City of Cottonwood team, the Yavapai County team, there's a Yavapai College team, or Old Town team. Pick the entity or organization you most closely identify with. This doesn't have to be a formal association. Say your kids go to Cottonwood Elementary School, pick the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District team. Or say, you don't know what to pick, but you know you live in Yavapai County, pick Yavapai County team. It's very informal. It's up to you what team you want to be a part of. So once you have registered, each day of Bike to Work Week, you'll be sent an email asking how far you rode. Each commute will have a point value. In addition, you earn points by attending all the events that Carla showed you there. At the end of the week, the team with the most points will win this trophy, which is a deconstructed and upcycled bicycle that is designed and handmade by Mayor Olinsky. So the team will be awarded, the winning team will be awarded that. But next year, the winning team will be tasked with defending their title because the trophy will travel to the winning team each year. So of course, this is all free. We encourage everyone to participate for your health and the health of our community. You can find the registration page at yavapaihealth.com. And it's just right front and center there. You just click on that and it gives you more information and you can click right on the registration. It's also on the mayor's Facebook page. He has links to the registration and more information. You can even just email cottonwoodbikeweek@gmail.com and be sent registration and more information. So, thank you. Hope to see you all riding.
Thank you for your presentation. Now, I interviewed both you and Carla Hofer on my Inside Cottonwood, and you made a, I don't even want to call it an idle threat.[560.16][560.16](laughing). You made a pretty aggressive threat that Yavapai County was going to take the trophy this year, and I just can't let that happen. So I really encourage folks to sign up for the Cottonwood team.
But you know, they're, how they're achieving that is by blocking people who are trying to sign up for the City of Cottonwood team. I tried to register this morning and it wouldn't let.[579.16][579.16](laughing). So I'm on to you.
Is that, really?
That is really true.
Okay, well, I want to, I want to know if there are problems, because I don't...
There, there cannot be any foul play, because I'm really...
No, no. No, no. We just want people exercising.
That's cute.
Thank you for your presentation, appreciate it. Mr. Piper?
(inaudible)
If, if you would, please, sir...
(inaudible) who's insuring these bicycles?
The question is if there is an accident, who's insuring the bicyclists?
If these bicycles are on the road uninsured, who's to pay for it if they cause an accident?
Well, I would say that, you know, it's up to each individual and hopefully, you know, bicycles have the right to be on the road and that the other motorists would follow the laws. It certainly, I don't believe it would fall on the county, but we hope that everybody's going to be safe out there.
We can, we can ask the, we can pose the question to our city attorney as well.
Who would then tell you it depends?
So, you would say it into the mic. It's a valid question, so what, you know...
And it's a difficult one to answer, Mayor. It would depend upon the circumstances, but I think what Ms. Gottschalk said, I would, I would agree with that.
I think really the whole purpose of Bike Awareness Month, too, is to, is for awareness and education, which is certainly one of the five pillars of, of a good bike program, is education, so, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Piper. And thank you, Ms. Gottschalk.
Good job.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to call to the public. There are yellow forms on the back table if there's anyone in the public that wishes to address the council. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute period. Is there anybody who would like to address the council in the public for something that is not on the agenda? Okay. And we'll move on then to approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April 4, 2017.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
I move to approve the minutes of, I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes of April 4, 2017.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Allen made the motion, and Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. All right, moving on to unfinished business, we have Resolution Number 2889 approving an intergovernmental agreement with Arizona State Parks and Trails, formerly Arizona State Parks, for the transfer of a wastewater lift station, dedication of a permanent public utility easement, and other matters.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In 2011...
If you would please just, if you would just take a minute to introduce yourself. We know who you are, but there might be some folks...
My name's Roger Biggs. I'm the city's utility manager.
Thank you, Roger.
In 2011, Arizona State Parks and the City of Cottonwood entered into an intergovernmental agreement, which provided for city assistance with the operation of Dead Horse State Parks' water and wastewater infrastructure. And in October 2015, we came back before council with approval of Resolution 2815, renewing that IGA for another 10 years. The city wishes to facilitate potential commercial development outside the park boundaries, adjacent to but outside the park boundaries. In order to make this happen, the city requires a permanent easement and the park's lift station. We entered into a series of negotiations with Arizona State Parks and Trails. They were, went through the Attorney General's Office, the Arizona State Park Staff, Leadership and Board, and the Arizona Joint Legislative Committee on Capital Review. The proposed IGA transfers ownership of the park's main lift station and downstream piping to the city provides for an easement for a sewer main, and continues operation of the city's, or continues the city's assistance with the park's water and wastewater infrastructure, and provides for occasional sweeping of the streets within the park. I ask that council adopt Resolution 2889, approving an IGA with Arizona State Parks and Trails to transfer ownership of Dead Horse Ranch State Parks' main wastewater lift station, provides a permanent public utility easement, and continues the city's assistance with maintenance and operation of the park's potable water and wastewater systems. Council has any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, for those council members who've been here for a while, this is an item that we formally brought to you, and it was approved. The problem was the length of the agreement, which allowed for an initial 10 years and then a second 10 years. That doesn't provide the amount of kind of permanency that development needs to go get funding or financing to do a project. And as you will recall, this was a project that involved the Blazenem Ranch and their desire to provide overnight lodging facilities and, and the need for wastewater treatment in that area. And so we've worked diligently with them, as well as State Parks, and it's taken an enormous amount of time and effort to finally get this done. But I think this is a positive for the city and that we already maintain and, and keep the utilities at the state parks functioning. That was something that we took on during the recession when the state park was, was having difficulty. And again, I think it behooves us to continue that. This would just give us the ability to take over complete control of that lift station with the necessary easements to reach it and make it part of the Cottonwood system. And again, we wouldn't have to go through this in the future if there was further development out there that required wastewater treatment. And Mr. and Mrs. Mayor, you're here tonight, if you have any questions for them as well.
Are there any questions for staff from council? Okay. Very good. Any questions for the applicant from council? No? Okay. I'm, I'm excited to see the agreement come forward. I think it's, it's going to give the green light to some positive development that I think will benefit the Cottonwood economy greatly, so I'm excited to see this finally going through. I'm just a little concerned about the street sweeping requirement. I don't think we've, have we got a street sweeper yet?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do? Okay. Great.
That'll make it a lot easier as opposed to out there with a bunch of guys with brooms.
Good. Don't want to make a commitment we can't keep. All right. If there's no further discussion, then do I hear a motion?
I move to approve, to adopt Resolution 2889, approving the proposed intergovernmental agreement with Arizona State Parks and Trails. Second.
Okay, Councilmember Norman made the motion, Councilmember Pfeiffer seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Very good. Resolution passes, and Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution 2889 by title only.
Resolution Number 2889, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona State Parks Board to operate and maintain the Dead Horse Ranch State Park potable water and wastewater collection systems, and to allow the city to utilize the park's lift station to expand and improve the city's wastewater collection and treatment capabilities. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, next item is Award of Contract for Vehicle Maintenance and Repair Services to Reese &amp; Sons Tire and Automotive, Inc.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Jeff Cook, Contract and Purchasing Administrator for the city. As directed, staff has reissued the proposal, and we went through our normal channels of advertising it. We put it in the newspaper, city website, public, public purchase, excuse me. And I took the initiative to actually directly email it all out to the local shops, everyone that we thought may be interested. We conducted another pre-proposal conference, and we had higher turnout than we had in the past. But at the end of the day, we still received the same three proposals that we had before. And we had a committee consisting of Public Works, Transit, Utilities, and the Police Department. They're the heaviest users of these services and the subject matter experts who should be scoring these. So they were on board with that. I performed the reference checks myself, and then we sent Public Works out to conduct site visits. And so Reese &amp; Sons received the highest average score from all the committee members and was also unanimously chosen as the most advantageous by each proposer, or by each score.
Very good. Any questions from council?
Make a motion?
Sure.
I move to award the contract for city fleet vehicle maintenance and repair services to Reese &amp; Sons Tire and Automotive, Inc.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Althouse made the motion, and Pfeiffer seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Following items are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the items will be removed from the consent agenda, considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have two items tonight on the consent agenda. First item is Resolution Numbers 2884 through 2887, approving intergovernmental agreements with Sedona Fire District, Verde Valley Fire District, Copper Canyon Fire, and Medical Authority, and the Town of Jerome for emergency dispatching services, and approving an emergency dispatch services agreement with the Verde Valley Ambulance Company. And Resolution Number 2890, Mingus Avenue Right-of-Way Dedication. Are there any items that the council wishes to pool? All right. Anyone from the public wish to pool an item from the consent agenda? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
I'll second that. Vice Mayor made the motion, Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Moving on then, a new business. Item one is Award of Bid...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, oh, I'm so sorry. Please read Resolutions Number 2884 to 2887 by title only, and Resolution Number 2890 by title only.
Resolution Number 2884, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Sedona Fire District for Emergency Services Dispatching. Resolution Number 2885, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Verde Valley Fire District for Emergency Services Dispatching. Resolution Number 2886, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Copper Canyon Fire and Medical Authority for Emergency Services Dispatching. Resolution Number 2887, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Jerome for Emergency Services Dispatching. And Resolution Number 2890, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, dedicating city-owned land as a public right-of-way. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. All right, new business. Item one, Award of Bid and Approval of Agreement with Kincaid Civil Construction for the Mingus Avenue Waterline Replacement Project.
I feel like I'm cheating off your paper.
Hello, Mr. Biggs.
I'm Roger Biggs. I'm the city's utility manager. Tonight, I ask for council's approval of a contract with Kincaid Civil Construction in the amount of $1,125,613.38 for the construction of the Mingus Avenue Waterline. It's approximately a 6,000-foot waterline replacement. A million dollars of the price tag is paid through a WIFL loan the city received as part of a refinance for the 2,004 water bonds, and that includes $550,000 in a forgivable principal. The remaining $125,000 is part of the utilities, facilities maintenance budget, if you will. Wait, council have any questions?
Any questions, council members?
And Mayor, council members, this is obviously the beginning of the reconstruction of Mingus Avenue, so we've got to get these guys in, get them done before July 1st, so we can keep, keep the construction on schedule as well.
Okay. All right. If there's no discussion from council, I'll go ahead and move to award the contract for the Mingus Avenue Waterline Replacement Project to Kincaid Civil Construction, LLC, in the amount of $1,125,000... I'm not used to saying a number that big. $614.38.
Second. Oh, go ahead. Either one of us.
All right, so Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Award of Contract for Cottonwood Street Sidewalk Improvements.
Just got to wait for our presentation screen to come up. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Have requested tonight for you guys to consider awarding a contract to Pima Paving to go ahead and do some ADA sidewalk improvements on Cottonwood Street over by Safeway. It's a grant-funded project through Federal High Administration, which was passed through ADOT, through the 5311 program. So we received $175,000 worth of funding to go and do the project. Our original goal was to go ahead and do the north side of the sidewalk, the goal was to do the whole project. And we broke it up into two phases, the north side and then the south side. The north side came back favorable inside of our funding limits, but in order to go ahead and do the whole south side, we exceeded our funding by roughly $39,000. So in order to maintain the primary goal of the project, which is to improve the ADA accessibility at our bus stops, and also to improve our pedestrian access in this area, we looked at scaling the project back to the, it is the bus stop on the south side of Cottonwood Street. And basically going from that bus stop west back to Sawmill Road, the drive entrance to the Safeway parking lot, which is just south. Thank you, sir. Okay. So here's the bus shelter on the south side of the road. And going to propose that we stop the sidewalk on the east side of that, take it back to the entrance, and then we'll have a sidewalk or crosswalk stripe there to go ahead and continue with the project on the north side of the road, which will actually go all the way to the existing sidewalk. I believe this is Sawmill Gardens Development. What staff is looking at right now, because we don't have all the funding to go and do the entire project, where we'd like to go ahead and get approval from you to go ahead and do the project all on the north side of the road, up to the bus stop on the south side, and to have us continue to pursue alternate funding through the grant mechanism so we can actually complete the construction of the sidewalk on the south side, so we have a full urban corridor on the roadway. With that, the monies that we're looking at would have up to a 20% match requirement for that, which the city would have to go ahead and identify internally to go ahead and meet that requirement. But if we aren't successful at doing that, at least we'll meet the original intent of the grant to improve accessibility. But we can also, with future projects, try to make those improvements and try to use some economies of scale for some other bids that we can use on this project and maybe save a little bit of money.
Okay.
So I'm asking, do you consider approving this? It's kind of late in the game. We're under a time constraint on grant funding to get things done by the end of June. So it's one of those things that the contractor has said, yes, we can get it done in a timeframe. We just need to be able to get going.
Can you go into a little bit more detail about the improvement accessibility that's going to occur with this project?
Okay, sure. On the north side of the road, there's going to be a six-foot wide sidewalk constructed that will actually improve the driveways onto all the parcels on the north side of the road to take access from Cottonwood Street. There'll be the four-foot wraparounds back behind the driveway to maintain that consistent path through pedestrians. The bus shelters will actually be pushed back off of the curb, so you have that sidewalk in front, and then you have your shelter behind there. Gives people abilities to go and turn around and everything, so it improves their access there. Same thing on the south side of the road, we'll have a six-foot sidewalk with a curb ramp to be able to get people up onto the sidewalk. A little bit of landscape relocation on that south side, it's a little more challenging because you've got the nice retaining walls for the shopping center, as well as some undulating surface, and even some utilities with some telephone pedestals, irrigation boxes, and even a fire hydrant or two.
Okay. So will the buses then be able to pull out of the lane of traffic to...
No, the buses are still going to stay inside the, the traffic path. People have to continue to go around. We're not changing the striping on the main street itself.
Okay.
So as you can see there with the turn lane going into the parking lot, that's going to remain as it is. Yeah, someday down the road, we could probably definitely look at doing that.
That's a shame we can't do that with this project. That seems to be somewhat of a hazard on that street. It gets pretty busy.
Understood.
I just had a couple of questions. Does the grant require that work be started or completed by the end of June?
The requirement is that work is actually completed by the end of June.
And are there any other feasible options within this timeframe?
The other alternative is, if they don't have available funding, is to look at using some of the sidewalk money that the city has set aside, and if the council was of a mind to do that, what we would recommend is to separate it out as a separate project, because this is a federally funded project, which is a lot more expensive than if we just did it ourself and did it locally. So, let's, if we don't get anything from ADOT, we may go ahead and bring this back to council for consideration of using some of those dollars that are allocated for next year.
Remind me again, what was that total that was allocated?
Hundred and fifty, or was it a hundred thousand? For sidewalks? I believe it was a hundred thousand for sidewalks.
Mayor, members of the council, Morgan Scott with Public Works. I think we total had about 175 to begin with, but it was also a 10% match. Quite a bit of that actually went towards right-of-way procurement. Unfortunately, we went with, because this is a federal project, we have to go through the federal requirements to get the right-of-way, so we went with an outside consultant to help us with that process. In order to help us in the future, what we'd like to do next year, and I believe this was left in the budget, is get Robert trained on the federal procurement process so that we can start to do things like that in-house, so that more of these grants can go towards the actual infrastructure and less towards consultants to procure right-of-way.
But I think you were, you were asking Councilman Henry about the available funding that we identified for the budget this next year, and a hundred thousand, wasn't it? Yeah, a hundred thousand.
Thank you. So then earlier when you mentioned that we could still submit the second portion of the project for a grant in the future, is there a timeframe that we can do that? Is it within this next budget year?
It's gonna depend on what type of funding is available. Not recommending that we do, you know, we don't do this little piece up to the bus shelter, but for the other piece, yes. It just depends on what funding ADOT says we have available, if that's our funding mechanism. If we can try and find some other sources, I'm not too familiar on a whole lot of others right now, they're giving out money for sidewalks, but we could definitely look at that. And the goal would be to try and do that sooner rather than later, yes.
And was this area selected because of the volume?
No, I believe this was actually selected because of the bus stops, the shelters being so close to the roadway, and the requirement from ADOT is that we have ADA accessibility at our bus stops, and this looked like a pretty clean quarter to go ahead and do that, fairly high priority, because we do have the shopping center and then the residences on the north side of the road.
I'm just concerned about starting a project and then not having a definite timeframe to finish the rest of the, of the project.
Understood, that's fair.
And we may be able to bring that back to you relatively quickly. We're kind of waiting on ADOT right now, but again, if ADOT doesn't come up with something, probably the quickest opportunity would be to tap into those sidewalk funds and finish this up.
Okay, thank you.
And again, that's just a widening of the sidewalk on the south side, or there is, I'm trying to think if there's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk there right now, correct. So it'd be installing new sidewalks.
But everything on the north side, which is, which abuts the residences, would be complete in this process, so there wouldn't be a need to come back later after the construction's been complete and start more construction.
You got it, yes.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor and council, the staff discussion earlier today also included the possibility that you could authorize staff without coming back to you to accept grant funding and match it at up to 20% in your discretion as part of this motion, which would keep us from having to come back to you to do that if, if staff found the funding.
Up to 20% of the total construction cost?
I, I think there, there was discussion about a range of different funding opportunities, and the maximum match, we think, among those possibilities would be, would be a 20% match. But if you want to cap it lower than that, you can certainly do that, too.
I see what you're saying.
The, the match on the current project is 10%.
Okay.
And so, the most, we feel that ADOT may come back and say, you know, we need 20% from the city.
I understand, okay.
So that's about 7,800, plus or minus in that ballpark?
For?
For the remainder?
To finish the whole thing, yes.
I don't know how the rest of council feels, I'm a little bit hesitant at this time without actually addressing and looking at other areas where we might want to spend those funds to actually go ahead and move in that direction, just personally, I'd like to know from the rest of council.
And, and I'll give you my concern, because it needs to be ADA accessible, that is one of the biggest things, is you cannot get a wheelchair around the front of the bus, whatever they're called now, you can't get a wheelchair in it, if somebody's wearing, has got any kind of assistive device, it makes it very difficult for them to get actually inside to sit down. And so that's why I'm more in favor possibly of, of letting this go, because we need to be ADA accessible.
I'm, I'm fine with the recommendation, I'm just concerned about that second portion, that is that, the rest of that sidewalk, and how do you feel tonight about approving staff to go ahead and have the authority to go ahead with that grant process?
I'm, I'm very much for that, because this is not, it's not the first rodeo, they've done this before where they've not been able to get to the, the entire project and very quickly, because it becomes a goal to get that, once they find out it's the council's goal. They get on it very quickly to get the remainder of it done, so I have faith in, in our staff that that's something that they will do, once they understand that's something we would like done.
And, and if I could, Mayor, we're probably talking about two tracks here. I think what Mr. Horton was saying, if we are successful with ADOT and getting funding, what we'd like to do is get the council's approval to move ahead with any additional match that we may need to get that done. If we're talking about using sidewalk money for next year, let's make that a separate track where we would come back to the council and say, we weren't successful, here's some other options that we're looking at for sidewalk improvements, is this the one we want to go after?
I understand. So certainly with the money that we have right now, we're going to be able to improve accessibility to the two shelters, one on the north, one on the south, at a bare minimum we'll be able to get that much done. But I am concerned too about having a half-finished project, we have a lot of half-finished sidewalks throughout town, and it's, it's, you know, discouraging. But if, if we're gonna pull from the money that the council set aside to improve sidewalks, I think council should really weigh in on where that money's applied first, and this street here may not make the cut based on needs throughout the community, but if we can secure some ADOT funding, I'd be comfortable with authorizing staff to get that funding up to 20% match.
Yes.
Does that seem reasonable to the rest of council?
I agree.
Okay, alright.
You want to do the motions?
Sure.
It's gonna be?
Alright, so I'll, I'll move to award the contract to perform the sidewalk improvements along Cottonwood Street between Sawmill Road and a point approximately 100 feet west of Cove Parkway, through the use of a federal grant, and to authorize staff to seek another federal grant with a, up to 20% match to continue the other improvements on the south side.
Or state?
Or state. Or any kind of money.
Second.
From anywhere.
A second.
Okay, so we had a motion by the mayor and Councilmember Allen seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Motion's approved, thanks.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, next item is agreement with Jerome Properties LLC for the abandonment of a portion of city right-of-way on Pima Street in exchange for the construction and dedication of additional public parking and other consideration.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're here today to talk about the Pima Street, proposed Pima Street improvements. This was, came to the council about a month ago, and we'll go through a couple, just a little bit of the background for everyone who's, who is not familiar with this project. I apologize if I didn't introduce myself, Morgan Scott with Development Services. So let me jump a little bit into the background, and then I'll jump into some aerial photos and site locations, just to get everybody familiar with the area. Again, I apologize if you've had to sit through my presentation before, but just to catch a few people up to the, where we're at. So city staff was approached by a developer, Jerome Properties LLC, who intended to rezone a parcel on Pima Street from residential to commercial in order to put in some parking. As, and I'll invite the developer up here in a minute to talk about why as they moved into this, but as they were doing the project, they realized the project probably could benefit the public a lot more if it had both public and private parking, so they've come to the city and asked, can we come up with some shared agreements here in which the city would abandon a portion of right-of-way in exchange for allowing the developer to build both public and private parking? As part of the rezoning, the developer would have to be required to construct the south half of Pima Street, so they were already going to do the south half, now they're talking about doing the entire full section of Pima Street. The developer is now requesting to instead construct a total of 44 parking spaces, and I believe that might be down to 43 due to the latest revisions, but it's approximately 40 to 44 parking spaces, 13 of which are public, 32 of which would be private, and they are proposing to construct the entire width of Pima Street from Cactus Street to several hundred feet to the west. They are asking for a couple of exemptions, and I'm gonna, in a few minutes, dodge off to Steve to ask him to explain, I misspoke when I said exemption. Apparently, we can't just give an exemption to someone from the code, so there's a process, and I'm gonna punt to Steve to explain that process here in a minute, but they are asking us to allow back-in parking. Basically, our code right now restricts a commercial development from doing parking that backs into a street. The reason the staff is okay with that, ultimately it's the council's call, of course, but the reason the staff's okay with that is, it's very unlikely that Pima Street will ever go anywhere, go be a through-street, there's a very large hillside to the west, also it just doesn't go, even if it, something did develop, let's just say there was a 50-unit apartment complex on top of that hillside, that's not a lot of traffic. You're not talking a lot of traffic based on, say, one apartment complex or one housing complex. And right now, it's an R2 zoning, so you wouldn't even get very high-density housing. So that's one of the reasons that staff thinks this might be something the council might want to consider. They're also asking us to abandon a portion of right-of-way, it's approximately 3,300 square feet of right-of-way, about six feet wide on one end, 14 feet wide on the other, and 330 feet long. This item was brought to the council on March 14th, and the council directed staff on a few different items. Basically, you asked us to resolve a survey issue, which I'll go through in a second. There's a neighboring property owner who's concerned, he's been told by a surveyor that he hired that his property is much further south than several other surveyors which the developer hired. Council, you also asked us to maintain contact with the neighbor to address, he had several concerns, so we're gonna address all of his concerns tonight, and we'll talk about what the developer's done to address his concerns. Finally, we wanted to make sure that any lighting in the area was dark sky compliant, as well as it was shielded from the residential, both the future residential properties and the current residential properties. Finally, council, I believe you asked for a slatted gate that would protect the existing residents from any headlights that would come if the area came, basically it would protect headlights from coming in their back door. Also, you asked for a bike rack near Pima Street and Cactus, and finally signage that would state something about, it's not a through-street, so we don't get a lot of people coming in and turning around and disturbing the few residents or future residents that might be back there. So just to bring everybody familiar with the area, and council, I do apologize, because I know you've seen this before, this is Main Street, this is Pima Street, this is Cactus Street, we're talking about this area here in red, this is the Masonic Lodge up on the hill, so it is down in the bottom of this little canyon right here, this is another ridgeline right here, there are some existing residences right here. The neighbor who is the most concerned actually owns a vacant piece of property right here that he intends to build on someday, so just so we're all familiar with the area. This is a look down from the Masonic Lodge, so you can see Cactus Street right here, and this right here would be the extension of Pima Street. Just so everyone knows, what is proposed is right after this telephone pole, basically there would be parking, the private parking right here, the public parking would be on this side, would start about in this location, and of course, Pima Street would extend almost all the way to this pole right here, just so we're all looking at the same thing. I know sometimes we're all not used to looking at construction documents, and it can be a little confusing, so. So this is the construction plan, and both the engineer and the developer, as well as the proposed contractor are here today. Here is Cactus Street, here is the existing residences on Cactus Street, and what they're proposing is extending Ca- I'm, I'm sorry, extending Pima Street to the west, the 13 public parking spaces, the 32 private parking spaces, this is where the gate would go, a wall here to protect the residences from the headlights, a fire department turnaround, as well as extending this to the north to give access to all of these properties. You can see that there would be a dead-end road right here that could be used in the future to extend through, however, if you've been down this area, you can see why it's probably very unlikely that will ever happen. So first I want to go through what we've done to address the council's concerns. The first, in regards to the survey, and I'll bring up an image that'll explain this better in a second, but what the developer did was they asked the engineer to move the project as far south as possible, so actually, if the neighboring property owner's surveyor is correct, the entire project is off of his property, the back of sidewalk is still clear of his property. If the surveyor is incorrect, then there's about a 10-foot buffer space, so either way you've got a buffer, but either way you're off of, off of this property.
A 10-foot buffer between, between the, the parking lot and the property?
Yes. If the neighboring property owner's surveyor is incorrect, there's a 10-foot buffer. If he's correct, there's only about a two-foot buffer.
Okay.
The city had several conversations with the neighbor, in fact, I believe our, our city attorney met with him, I've had several phone calls with him, many of you have seen the letters he's sent, so we've been addressing his issues, and I do know he sent a letter earlier today, which we can bring up here in a minute. Finally, the developer agreed, all lights will be dark sky compliant, that's not an issue, a slatted gate will be installed. Right now, there is no bike rack shown, and the signs for no through-street will of course be added. I, I do want to run through this really quickly, I apologize, I don't want to take up too much of everyone's time, but let me run through the bullet points of the agreement. Of course, the entire agreement is within your packet, but I'll just run through the bullet points. This is what, if the council chooses to move forward, this is what the city would be obligated to do. One, abandon a portion of right-of-way that I described earlier, and I'll show you an image in a second. Two, allow back-in parking to the street, and that's what we'll have to talk about, what is the mechanism to allow that back-in parking? Three, maintain all improvements on the public property, of course, we would do that anyways, any developer who comes in and builds a street, builds a public parking lot, the city gets to maintain that, it's just clarified within the agreement. Three, I'm sorry, four, we would provide water for all the landscaping to the public property, of course, and we'd waive any permitting fees for this project. Finally, we would pay for all the materials for a two-inch water line, and the developer would actually install that line. And that was kind of a, a way to address one of the neighboring property owners' biggest concerns. So that's everything the city would be obligated to do, should you choose to move forward, and in the next three slides, I'll go through everything that the developer would be obligated to do.
So they're waiving other permitting fees for both the private developer and the city? Would the city have to pay, the city would have to pull a permit?
No.
For this, no?
Yeah, the city wouldn't have to pull a permit.
So that's for the private developer?
That's correct. In fact, right now, the city would have no costs in this, other than dedicating the materials for the two-inch water main, which, I'm trying to remember where Roger told me, somewhere between 500 and a thousand dollars.
Okay.
The developer would be required to submit for rezoning and go through that entire process as a separate, we, we can't tie these two together, Steve can explain this better than I can, but we can't contractually say, we will rezone you, they're gonna have to go through that process entirely separately. They would grant a PUE over the old right-of-way, just in case there is ever need for utilities or anything else usage of that area, we can still use it as a utility easement.
And PUE is public utility easement?
Thank you very much, I apologize, I throw out acronyms, please feel free to stop me and say, what does, what does that mean? Yes, PUE is public utility easement. They would be provided, they would be required to provide all legal descriptions, which is a significant cost in a project like this, because there's several legal descriptions for the project. They would be required to pay for all design and construction costs, so this would be 100% on the developer. Finally, they'd have to address all of city staff's comments in regards to the conceptual plans, they are not final plans, because obviously, they weren't gonna pour into an entire final plan when you're still discussing this agreement. They would install 12 to 15 public parking, parking spaces, and the reason we left that flexibility is, if, should there be a change in the final plan, something that would adjust, basically they need to require a minimum of 12 public parking spaces. Last time, they proposed 15, just in a few changes, it's now down to 13. Finally, they'd have to install lighting to be dark sky compliant, and I apologize, it's not finally, so we have two more slides. They'd have to install all property pins, I'll try to rush this, through this, I'm sorry. They'd have to install the gate with the privacy slats, they'd install the signage, they would install a three-to-four-foot tall screen wall that would block the headlights. Originally, if you read our zoning code, it talks about there needs to be a six-foot tall retaining wall between a commercial development, a rezone of a commercial to residential. Two things, one, the commercial is technically not next to the residential, because there's a right-of-way in the middle, however, the developer agreed to install a six-foot tall wall, but at the neighbor's request, he's requesting only a three-to-four-foot tall wall, because he, he basically likes his views, so if it's okay with the neighboring property owner, it's okay with staff, and we're interested in the council's comments. Finally, they'd have to gr- However, the developer agreed to install a six-foot-tall wall, but at the neighbor's request, he's requesting only a three-to-four-foot-tall wall, because he basically likes his views, so if it's okay with the neighboring property owner, it's okay with staff, and we're interested in the council's comments. Finally, they'd have to grant the city a portion of right of way, and I'll show you what that right of way is here in a minute. They would be required to fix a little bit of the regional detention and regional drainage issues, and finally, they would shield the lights from shining onto residential properties. The agreement does state that they would install a bike rack somewhere near Cactus Street, and finally, it states that they would install a two-inch water line between Cactus Street to Catclaw Street. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna go through a few images here real quick that I hope will explain what we're discussing, where the right of ways and everything else are. Everything in yellow here is city right of way, so everything inside of yellow is city right of way, here's Pima Street, here's Cactus Street. None of this is developed, all of this is raw land today, so if you walk out there, it's tough to tell what's a street, what's not a street. But everything within this, this is what's known as Catclaw Street, this is Creosote Street, and of course, Pima Street actually continues to the west, but goes up a significant grade right here. Everything in purple is what's owned by the developer, Jerome Properties, everything in red is what's owned by the neighboring property owner, and as you can see, I did an offset, because this is what the developer's survey says he owns, this is what the neighboring property owner says he owns. As you can see, in either case, the improvements do not go onto his property. There is a ten-foot buffer, should his surveyor be incorrect. So I know that's one of the most confusing points, I wanted to stop to see if there's any questions on that for a second.
Any questions at all from council?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'll pick up one small correction, Morgan's doing a phenomenal job, there've been eleven versions of the site plan. Multiple drafts going back and forth of the agreement, but in the latest draft of the agreement, the bike rack is not in there, just to let council know.
Thank you, thank you for correcting that.
Morgan, one thing you said to me earlier, we went out and walked the property, because I was curious what we were talking about. And one thing you said was if the surveyor, the private owner's, Dr. Roscoe's surveyor is correct, then all the properties down there would be, are off?
That's correct, all the houses on this block, and there's a few houses on the very north end of this block, that would basically be on the wrong properties, or their property lines would be in the middle of the buildings. So that's another item indicating that Dr. Roscoe's surveyor is probably incorrect, we do not have a surveyor on staff, we're not qualified to review that, but it seems like he's not correct.
And but there are three other surveyors that have looked at that and disagree with?
That's correct.
The gentleman McDonald, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, three other local surveyors who will also agree that the more northern alignment is the more correct alignment.
Mr. Horton, how does that get resolved? I mean, is it just a private thing, and it's?
Oftentimes, through private litigation. I think, as Morgan said, we are not qualified to make a final determination, courts ultimately would make a final determination over the property lines and property corners. We're making our best judgment of where the property line property is, properly is.
But either way, we're not on the property, okay.
That's, in another way, it sometimes gets resolved, and I don't know if this will go this direction or not, but the state has what they call a board of technical registrations, where someone will actually challenge another engineer or another surveyor's work, and that gets delivered to the board of technical registration to be reviewed. Very similar to a court case, but basically, the jury or the judge is a panel of engineers and surveyors who are reviewing the work. That could go this way, but what the developer has done instead, rather than wait on that, they've just moved the project south, so that either way, we're technically, this project off of this property.
You know, and it's probably also important to state, and Steve may want to elaborate on this, but the suggestion from Dr. Roscoe was to just split the difference, and that's really not an option here. You know, the survey lines are one way or the other, it's, you can't really split the difference, because again, you get into that gifting clause issue, depending on where the line actually falls.
One more image, I just threw these together, everything in green right here is actually the right of way that they're asking to be abandoned, as you can see, it does not infringe. I had one property owner, in fact, he's a property owner who owns property further to the west, and he called me because he read an article saying we're abandoning Pima Street. Well, of course, we're not abandoning anything that would not allow someone to use Pima Street, we're just abandoning a small sliver along the side. And as you can see right here, after the abandonment, should the council choose to abandon it, there's still fifty feet of right of way, which meets our city standards for cross-sections. Also, this blue area right here is a portion of right of way that the developer would be dedicating to the city, because as you can see, it's a portion of the street. A couple of outstanding issues, let me jump back one slide, the wall, so there is a wall proposed on the very north end of the property, originally, it was proposed along the south line of Dr. Roscoe's property or north line of the project. As you can see, the sidewalk is off of his property, the wall would be on his property, should his surveyor be correct, and again. So a couple of solutions here, we could put the wall here, and then you only have sidewalk and wall, and it looks very industrial. It's not nearly as appealing, which I think we're all hoping for kind of that park-like setting by having that large buffer back here, but that is an option that we could move forward with. Ultimately, your call is the council, like I said, we believe the surveyor to be incorrect, in which case, Steve, I don't know if you want to chime in on that, on what the ramifications would be, should we move forward with putting a wall further north?
Well, sure, Mayor and council, and Morgan and I discussed this earlier today, too. I think what we do is we'd have another conversation with Dr. Roscoe about what his preference might be with respect to, I mean, what we want to avoid is the possibility, however remote, of there being an encroaching public improvement. But I don't think the solution to that, as we sit here now, is something that Dr. Roscoe would endorse. So we'd have a conversation about which, what his preference would be, but I wouldn't want to set the city up for even remote possibility of civil litigation over the fact that that wall's encroaching or us having to remove the wall or move the wall. It's something I think we can work out, Dr. Roscoe has hired an attorney in Flagstaff, who I, when I met with him, it was in his attorney's office. And I've been in pretty regular contact with them over this, so Dr. Roscoe is genuinely, subjectively concerned about the project, but, you know, you can, you can read the letter he submitted to the record this morning. Anyway, I think there's ways to resolve the wall issue.
The wall is really a screen to protect from headlights and noise from the parking lot, right?
That's correct.
So I'm curious if that could be a live wall, vegetation, is that possible?
It's definitely possible, we might default to Baron to see if that's something we would normally allow a developer to do. We aren't technically held to our zoning ordinance in this situation, because the commercial does not abut directly to the residential. So I think there is some flexibility here, we do not require, we are not required to have a wall, so could it be a vegetation wall? I think that's a definite possibility.
I mean, I'm not suggesting we go back for a twelfth draft of this parking lot, I think it's a good neighborly thing to do, to put up a wall to screen the private property.
Baron Najad, Community Development Services Manager, and in this case, again, Morgan was saying that the buffer, the wall is for buffering between the residential and commercial. So in this case, it's a little bit unique, because the other side, residential side, is involved in the decision-making, so it is all just to make the buffering solid. So it can be both, it can be negotiated, again, it's a six-foot fence, if he wants something less, it can be discussed later on. And if it is possible, some cases, you can do solid wall, and then cover that with landscaping to make it softer. And only thing is, again, this can be talked, but maybe if landscaping would be enough by itself or not, so it is not just light, but it's also noise. So again, this is just, can be discussed with the other side or in the meetings.
But if we're not required to have a wall, wouldn't it be better to avoid the risk of future litigation? I'm just asking, within any kind of an encroachment, if it's not a requirement, why are we putting ourselves at risk?
Well, Mayor Miss Henry, at first, Dr. Roscoe didn't want a wall, and then I reported to him what Morgan had noted for you and advised me is this is something that's advantageous to property owners, because it does shield headlights from shining, when they are pulling into park, from shining into the residence, should there ever be a residence there, and I think that's Dr. Roscoe's intent. At that point, he said, you know what, that's right, I wouldn't, I do want a wall, I just don't want to feel like I'm fortress thin, so I'd rather it not be six feet and solid, how about three to four feet? And we got on the phone with Morgan, and we talked about how that seemed like a reasonable accommodation that we could endorse as staff.
So then, is Dr. Roscoe willing to provide some sort of release or agreement or something in writing to not then later bring litigation? I don't even know if we could do that, that would bind future property owners either, so we could maybe have this discussion another day, but I'm concerned about, we don't have to have a wall, and so why are we even going down that path now, just because he's changed his mind?
And the way we would avoid that is to make sure that the wall doesn't encroach. It may not, and if Dr. Roscoe were to allow, the solution that I think staff would endorse and has the better aesthetic is we would get him to agree that the wall can be where it is, regardless of where the property line is or isn't.
And so not to encroach, though, would be right smack next to that sidewalk, pretty much.
Right, and so the choice he would have is to have the wall be in a place where it's not ideal, or allow us to put it where we think it would still be on public property, but he may not, according to his surveyor's results. And so he would basically be acknowledging or conceding that we can put the wall there regardless of the property line issue.
But then again, how about subsequent owners of that parcel?
I think we would make sure that that agreement he gave us ran with the land.
I don't know, I don't know that I'm really on board, I guess I'm having a hard time picturing a wall that doesn't look really awful right next to a sidewalk, even if it's only three or four feet. Is it a trip hazard, are people going to sit on it and fall over, they're gonna try to ride their skateboards on it, I just am having all sorts of liability concerns with this wall.
Which might be alleviated if you put up a shrub.
That's what I was gonna say.
Or a wall.
I think vegetation would be, if any wall, I think vegetation, there's a two-foot, you said there's two-feet leeway between our property and his supposed, what his individual says, two feet's enough to get a vegetated wall in there, some bushes or something that can be trimmed very square and very pretty. And I think that's a topic we can discuss later, but once this project is on its way. I don't think we have to determine that right now, do we?
We don't, it's not a bad discussion point, but you're correct, it could be something, could be worked on the details. I did just ask the developer, and he said he'd be more than willing to maybe do more vegetation in exchange for a wall, and maybe that's a compromise, maybe we don't put the wall in, just do more vegetation. The other thing that could happen is, when a residence goes in there in the future, if they, whether that's Dr. Roscoe or some future owner, if they feel like the headlights are an issue at that point, they could put on a wall on at that point.
Those people would be walking into that property knowing that there's issues with the light, so if you complain about that after you're in there, it doesn't sound really good to me, I mean, it's either...
I'd just like to caution the council about a vegetation wall like that, that's probably gonna be maintenance-intensive, too, so you know, we have a hard enough time getting to all the landscape maintenance we have now, so it's something to think about where a wall is. There's a minimal amount of maintenance associated with that.
Mr. Mayor, the vice mayor's comments invite, and maybe Morgan was gonna get to this, but even Dr. Roscoe and his council admit that he is getting substantial value from this project, some of which he readily admits, some of which he doesn't. And among that is, right now, he has a piece of property that doesn't have water to it, he, without charge, is getting a lot of trenching and backfilling and material and a water line right up to his property line. He's getting a reasonable but favorable interpretation of the requirements for bringing sewer to his property, in that ordinarily, at the end of a five-hundred-foot run that's straight, or at the end of any run that changes direction, there would have to be a manhole. This happens to be only a hundred-and-fifty-foot run up to Cactus, and our utilities manager has said that he'd be okay with a clean out there. That saves Dr. Roscoe many thousands of dollars in order to get sewer, and he indicated that before the hardtop went down on this extension, that he would get the sewer line in, I think he wanted that additional work done, too, but that was sort of a bridge too far. So that's another benefit, substantial, right now, he has undevelopable property, without spending substantial amounts of money, and that money is, a lot of it's getting spent by the developer in order to make his property developable, also the street itself. If you've all walked out the Pima Street extension, it's pretty rugged, and it's going to be a street.
No, I think it's, you know, again, I'm on board with this project, I think it's a great partnership. I just, I do have concerns about that public section of public parking, because I, you know, I do live next to a parking lot, the public parking lot that shines headlights in my window, and it's a bummer, you know, it's really unfortunate to have to deal with that, and I can, you know, I can empathize with property owners that may live around there, it may be, Mr. Roscoe may be another property owner, if he sells it, I think if we're going to put in public parking, it's on the city to provide buffering. You know, it's some level of buffering, so, but I agree, he's getting a lot of improvements for nothing.
My two cents, Mayor, it's, you know, and to not put that wall where we want to put the wall is a little bit, I think we're kind of being held hostage by one surveyor. We've got three surveyors saying that, you know, this is what it is, and if his surveyor is right, then, as Morgan said, every piece of property down there is misaligned. And so, you know, if push came to shove, and we had to move that wall because of a court decision, I mean, that's something that could be done, but I'm not sure that, again, I would give up not having that buffer in between the wall and the sidewalk.
So you're saying you're mostly comfortable with leaving that buffer?
Yeah, I think the wall's fine, and again, the, Mr. or Dr. Roscoe's comfortable with the wall, as long as it's, you know, three or four feet. So, you know, in essence, he gets the wall, he gets a nice buffer, and, you know, we get a nice park-like setting to walk along, to get into Old Town.
So the wall would be right at the edge of the sidewalk, the sidewalk's how wide?
It would be a five-foot wide.
Five-foot wide, okay.
No, what I'm proposing is to put the wall back behind the buffer.
Behind the two-foot buffer?
At the yellow line?
It's actually a bigger buffer than that.
I think, Doug, you're proposing putting it back here where it's closer to a ten-foot buffer.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
And Doug, do you think that, or, and Steve, do you think that Dr. Roscoe would be willing to work with the city and then enter into an agreement that would run with the land as far as the wall?
I, I think that's, I would be optimistic that he would, it's the best solution, what it does is it it runs against his expectation, if you're out there, and we were out there just this afternoon, it's a narrow lot, and what it does is, you know, there's two property pins. And you can see that whichever pin you rely on, changes the dimensions of that lot significantly. So it may well be a process for Dr. Roscoe to finally accept.
I don't think it does.
It just changes where it is.
Yeah.
It's still a fifty-foot-wide lot, no matter where it sits.
If you would just repeat what Mr. Jurison said, please.
Yes, that was Mr. Jurison, he said, it doesn't really change the width of the lot, it just changes where it sits, for instance, and I apologize, this won't show up in the record, Matt, so you'll have to somehow describe this for everyone, Matt. For instance, right here, you can see, the lot's the same width, it's just whether it's further north or further south.
That's right, but yes, I think, and the other thing is, is if it turns out sometime in the future, it turns out that the one surveyor is right, and the three are wrong, and the property owner at the time wants to force the issue, then really, all we're doing is removing a wall. You know, it's not like we're taking down a major piece of vertical construction.
Right, we're not cutting into the parking lot and sidewalk and everything else, we're removing a wall.
It's a wall.
I've been asked by several people, why on earth is there a discrepancy, you know, surveying is a science, it should be simple math. Part of the reason is we're dealing with two different plats, one from nineteen seventeen, one from nineteen twenty. 1925. Both of those surveyors at the time were on the East Coast, obviously didn't look at the terrain when they were laying out the lots. And, you know, they were basically building these two different subdivisions on two different section lines, which you can see are spreading apart as they head west.
Are they here tonight to answer any questions?
I tried to track them down. Okay.
I think, for me, that was why I requested to go out there today. It was, so to anybody who, I guess, doesn't live down here, isn't familiar with the area, I found it very helpful to walk out there. And it is, don't wear your high heels, because it's rugged out back there, so.
All right, so, go ahead.
One last issue, I apologize, and this is my mistake because I misunderstood an exception. I thought we could basically just move forward and council could make an exception. So Steve's been digging into the legal process of how to make an exception to basically allow the developer to do this back in the park, back-end parking. So Steve, if you want to address what that issue, what that mechanism is?
Sure, thanks. Like Morgan alluded to earlier, the city cannot and will not contract for a zone change. That's unlawful, and because that's a legislative process, and that's going to be reserved in the first instance, planning and zoning, and ultimately to the council to decide on the rezoning. This agreement would be contingent on the successful rezoning, so the council could move forward, authorize the agreement. And then if the legislative process doesn't pan out, then nothing really happens. But similarly to the prohibition against contract zoning, there would also need to be some legislation to allow for the back-end parking situation, because the development code provision that prohibits it doesn't have any exceptions, and it doesn't have a mechanism for an administrative exception or for even a by-motion council exception. There needs to be, we've thought of one of two solutions, and both of which would come back to council for decision. Again, the ultimate implementation of this agreement would depend upon a favorable decision by council on one or the other. One is for this whole development project to become a planned area development. And within the planned area development, there can be modifications and waivers to existing development standards. At this point, and I think we might have further discussions about that, but right now, Mr. Jurison would prefer not to do that. He'd prefer to pursue his C1 zoning, rezoning application. So the other legislative solution to this would be what we call a text amendment to that development standard. And what staff is thinking about, and again, ultimately subject to council approval, is providing some narrow, we, at some point, we'd like to do this more broadly, but in the interest of time, we'd probably do something more narrow for this case, but not a one-off. It would be the council adopting some kind of administrative ability to waive the back-in parking prohibition for dead-end streets at or near the end of the dead end, where there's some reasonable, there's some evidence to lead to a reasonable conclusion that the dead-end street is not going to become a through street or a high-use street at any time in the future. That's something we're still working on. It's not anything, we've done anything more than sketch and outline yet, so that will come back to you over the next month or two. But that's what we're thinking about in terms of a legal mechanism to allow the back-end parking for this project.
So it seems like it would delay the project a significant amount of time?
It would not, because there is a rezoning that requires a trip to planning and zoning and two trips to the council before that's approved.
But we can move forward this agreement prior to?
Yes, and in your, you'll see the proposed action by council would be to approve the agreement and then authorize the city manager and I to negotiate the final terms and form of the agreement to accommodate what else we need to do. But it will, in any event, it will come back to you in the form of the final rezoning proposal, either for C1 or for PAD, if, you know, the applicant changes his mind, or as a rezoning and a proposed text amendment to the subdivision ordinance.
I think a text amendment's more appropriate. This doesn't seem to fall into PAD territory, in my opinion.
I agree.
Okay.
And we do have the applicant, his attorney, and the contractor here to answer any questions or add anything they'd like to add.
Okay, council, do you have any questions, any more questions for staff? No, okay. Would the applicant care to make a presentation to council?
Sure. Mayor, council, my name's Eric Jurison. I'm the owner, I guess I'm this one of Jerome Properties/Tavern Hotel. This has by far been the most difficult project I've ever tried to do. There's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of people have put a lot of work, from the city and staff to the contractors. As far as, just to talk about Dr. Roscoe for a quick moment, his surveyor, according to the other three surveyors, are wrong. I mean, it just happens. And if he's right, then everything I own is in the wrong spot and everyone else. I mean, it's that far off, you know, for that whole area. So I guess they're going to, it's up to Dr. Roscoe's surveyor to file if he's wrong. Even Dr. Roscoe, I think, has come on the other side of, he's probably right. With that said, it's a very narrow lot. And what Dr. Roscoe has is the right to build a home on his lot. That's what he has. He doesn't have the right to a view because he didn't buy it. You know, it's something like I'm standing on my balconies, the Tavern Hotel, and they look great out to the Red Rocks, but I'm about to have a three-story building next to me, the views are gone. You know, nothing I can do about it. I don't own the lot next to me, I don't have any rights to that. In Mr. Roscoe's case, the property is owned by the city and the citizens of Cottonwood. And so the best use or a use is this proposed use. This represents everybody, and what we're trying to do is do a beautiful project. A comparison would be like, if you're, anyone who's familiar with like, around the square in Prescott, those big wide streets, you know, where they back out into, you know, and there's residential, commercial, and everything, that's what this is. This is a big, wide, open space that's gonna have vines. There's a reason why Hidden Hands and I made this big land trade. I used to own the front corner, they want to have their walkway go through up to the top. That's where the sidewalk, that's back to the pedestrian area slash bike rack, and that's really, that's where all that's gonna happen. These parking places will be dedicated to hotel guests. Forty-four rooms, 31 parking places, plus eight places in the alley, covers all the rooms. Will employees park there? Yes. Will everyone who knows me park there? Yes. You know, what can I do about it? I don't patrol my parking lots in Jerome. I'm not a police officer, and you'd have to be out there, I'd have to have Neil, our local tow guy, tow all day long to enforce it. There are no gates. What we tried to do was line up Pima Street. You know, where you see the sidewalks, when you look down Pima Street from one end to the other, it should be semi-straight. The blocks should line up, the corners should line up. You know, there needs to be landscape, it needs to look nice. Mr. Roscoe, you know, the city owns that 10 feet, so we should landscape it so the citizens and the people using the parking lot, it looks nice from that side. You know, we want it to look nice, we don't want a wall next to the sidewalk. We want it to, you know, we want to beautify both sides of the street. I bought the house on the corner there because the driveway and carport were actually in middle of Pima Street. You know, so I now own, I'm the proud owner of Pima and Cactus also. Had to buy both sides of the street to keep working on this process. When I say there are a lot of people and properties involved to get to where we are today, slash 11 engineered drawings, so to get here. A lot of good parking. Parking's a necessary evil, you know, we need it, but I feel like we won't see it. You know, between the vineyard, behind the house on the corner, it's back there, get some trees growing, I think it's really gonna look nice. Any questions, thoughts? I've been talking about this parking lot, unfortunately, for six months.
All right, any questions from council?
Yep.
I think it's a wonderful project.
Thanks.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, this would be a good time to ask him for the bike rack.
Well, you know, of course, I'd like to see a bike rack there. I think with the overall development that's gonna occur there, I think that we can probably position one in a better location. It's a little bit tucked in a corner. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that.
I'll tell you how the developer feels. It's the wrong spot.
If you would address your, just come up and say you don't like bicycles, if you would.
I love bicycles. I don't necessarily think our city, as of yet, because of the lack of bike paths, you know, I ride in Havasu all the time, and in Scottsdale, we have bike paths and wide lanes. We are, you know, I hope we get there. I like that we're talking about bicycles. But we've talked, you know, I happen to know what the Hidden Hands project looks like, so I know where the pedestrian area is more out on the corner, and that's really where things will happen.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I think, I mean, I'm hoping we're gonna look at a whole other bike plan for Main Street, so this is kind of tucked off in the corner, so, yeah.
It's not a deal breaker for me, so.
No, okay. The one other thing, now that we're talking about it, that we brought up was the electric car parking deal, the little apparatus that, what's it called? Tesla, right?
Tesla.
Don't they pay for that? They'll come out and install it? Is that how that works? Anybody know about that? I don't, I don't drive a Tesla, in case you are wondering. But I've heard, I've heard there's only one other charging station, and that might be a way for us to get on the map, having a little Tesla charging station, you could advertise it and get a bunch of Tesla drivers up here. They probably have money. I imagine they have money if you drive a Tesla. They might spend it here in Cottonwood if we had a charging station.
Staying at the Pines Hotel, they have one.
They have one at the Pines? Okay, great. Anyway, judging from the crickets, I will move on to making a decision.
You want a motion?
Yeah, let's do that.
I move to approve the proposed agreement with Jerome Properties LLC to abandon a portion of the city right away along the Pima Street alignment west of Cactus Street in exchange for construction of public parking spaces and other considerations, subject to approval of the final terms and form of agreement by the city manager and city attorney.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Are we gonna have any discussion about where to place that buffer wall?
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Okay, so let's.
Go ahead and amend it.
I don't know that we have to amend it, I think it's just to provide maybe direction.
And that would be fine as well.
Okay. So my, I'm really leaning on moving that away from the sidewalk.
Me, too.
If it's, if it winds up that this one surveyor is correct, the least of our worries at that point is going to be removing a four-foot-tall block wall.
I agree.
From his property, his or her property.
And I'd have to agree, the closer you put it to the sidewalk, as Councilmember Henry was saying, you're gonna have skateboarders messing with it. If you put a little bit further away, they're not gonna be doing their, I don't know the proper terminology, but they're gonna be not abusing the wall.
Okay. Any other discussion?
If I have to think on or consider this wall, I would really urge that we do move it about that 10 feet away and then deal with, if we have to, later, just taking it down.
Okay. Maybe we could have skateboarders take it down.
Sure.
Any other thoughts?
And, you know, and just to clarify, my assumption is that that's a finished wall? Painted? Have you guys?
I would assume there will be some sort of block wall, like a textured block or something.
Mr. Jurison, if you would, please approach the microphone.
I would think we would go with like a textured block, maybe match the hotel, because the, I'm gonna remodel that house there and do a full remodel on that property, and I'm gonna copy the look of the hotel, so if I use the same block walls I'm using on the hotel, just to make the whole side of the street look the same, I'd probably go in that direction, is what I'd be suggesting. I'm, you know, I have more boards to go.
Okay. With the concept being it'd be an attractive, not just a CMU running bond.
Yeah, I'm pretty invested in making it attractive.
Okay, very good, all right. Is that all the direction that you need? I think we're all in agreement on that.
Yeah, still need a vote.
Okay. So there's a motion, Councilmember Rahouse made the motion, I believe, Councilmember Norman, Councilmember Piper, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Can you turn the lights back on, please?
And the room empty. Lose our crew here.
All right, next on the agenda, Resolution Number 2888. Discussion, consideration, and possible legal action to reappoint presiding City Magistrate A. Douglas Lasota to a new two-year term commencing on April 13, 2015 pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A1. The council may vote to convene in the executive session to discuss this matter, subject to the magistrate's right to require the council to discuss this matter in open session, and provided that no legal action may be taken in executive session. So.
Open session is fine with me.
I would move to dissolve into an executive session.
I'd second that.
Whatever council's pleasure is, I think.
Second.
So we have a motion from the mayor, Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Just to clarify for the record, Judge, you're not objecting to the executive session?
I was preferring to do it in open, but if the council authority wants to do it in an executive session, I'll yield to that.
Okay. I mean, you have the right to say you'd prefer it in open, it's your right.
It's your preference, Judge.
I'd prefer it in open, but I'm not gonna force it down your throat, so you guys are wanting an executive, I said I'll voluntarily agree with that, that's fine.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, and away we go.
I would like to make a rest of your night before we start, though.
Please, of course.
You're gonna have to stay a little longer.